Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order this meeting of the design review board for the city of Litchfield Park. Everyone, please rise and join me in allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law. Before we start our agenda items, there's a call to the committee for anybody who wishes to address this board or any issue that's not on our agenda tonight. See, there's one.
Chair, before you have three requests to speak, the second and third are regarding their.
The regarding. Yes, okay, just the first one. So, Mr. Joseph Soich.
Name Joe Soich, I've been a resident of this town since nineteen eighty-six. I was stationed out of move and then I thought I was moving up and I moved over to Litchfield Greens in two thousand and five. I scare. And there was probably one of your worst decisions I ever made in my life because my house borders Camelback. And the noise of a Camelback is incredible. We had truck traffic from four o'clock in the morning all through the night. And long story short, you can't even rest. And the town acquired parts of Camelback a few years ago from Metal Corp accounting and they enforced stopping the trucks that are going back and forth local traffic trucks only. But then Governor Hawes vetoed what the town put in. And I was just wondering if anybody on the board has any insight of are we ever gonna go back to, you know, only local truck traffic only because you can, you name it gravel trucks, cement trucks, all the big trucks out there, Amazon, J.B. Hunt, every truck, U.P.H., the trucks that are, you know, have natural gas or electrical, no big deal. But you have trucks that have double diesels and our walls running side seat there. So we continually have pollution and vehicles, but pollution and your windows have incredible amounts of black dust on it. And I've contacted the state and the state's like, oh, we don't deal with that. We only deal with dust being done on a site that's being built. So I just wonder if anybody on the board has an insight because the town's got a meeting in the twenty-first. And I just was hoping you all had some knowledge of what's going on.
I'm not sure that this board would have any much to say about that. It's we're kind of limited in what we can do and tonight especially on a non-agenda item, we're not really allowed to speak on that.
Couldn't even speak on it.
No.
I just thought I'd ask because, you know, it's just what's going on out there.
Yeah, I might, I think probably county, city council is probably the starting point and the ending point for that kind of discussion.
All right. Well, thank you. I just.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your input. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board on any non-agenda item? Okay, we'll move on. First item of business is approval of minutes. Would anyone like to propose a motion?
I'm agree approve of the minutes.
Motion, second, all favors say aye. Any opposed? And item B is a new wall construction. And we will have the Mr. present the case and then is the applicant here? And then when he's finished and you can, you can take the standing, give your name for the record and add any information you'd like.
Chair members of the board, good evening and it's nice to meet you all. It is the end of week six. I appreciate your board and all boards taking July off. It was really helpful for me just to get a little bit of foundation underneath my feet as we go through these items. We have two for you this evening. The first of which is item five B. This is a new wall construction project. The applicant is Michelle Rojas. She's to my left here in the audience. And this is a request to construct three new walls on her property, one of which is adjacent to the pathway system. By way of background discussion, the property is owned residential very low. This is RE or residential state. This is our, what you think of the classic Litchfield Park property. This is on Old Litchfield Road, very close to the Wigwam, our other case for you this evening. And again, the case, the request for you this evening would add block walls on three sides of the property. Now, for any new wall construction after two thousand and seven, these requests come to you as the DRB for review and approval. And specifically in section thirty dot O two dot B dot two is the requirement for full view fencing when you're adjacent or adjoining against all of these synonyms for the pathway system. I'm gonna show you a few different screens here just to get your sense of what we're looking at. That property is the one on bottom with the red tile roof. You can see the pathway system zigging and zagging its way from the top of the image to the bottom of the image. This is the route that takes you to Scout Park and all the way up to Bird Lane. Old Litchfield Road there is on the right. The applicant did provide a set of plans. It should pop up here for you. Again, the green is what's being proposed is a six-foot block wall. The blue are the four-foot gates into and out of the property. And there's an eight-foot gate proposed there in orange, just to get a better sense of how this interacts. I'm gonna do a quick little overlay for you so you can see where the house is in comparison with the requested walls and just where they are in adjacent seats to the pathway. And then the applicant has provided just cross-section and the schematics of how that wall would look again for the proposal for three sides of the property, including the power. As a way of staff analysis, we have this requirement and have had this requirement since two thousand and seven, so about seventeen years now if my math is correct. And in that analysis, we certainly wanted to see if this would stick out essentially. What do the other properties look like? And, you know, going back in time through the history of aerial imagery that we have, there's only been one property that's been constructed since this change in two thousand and seven. And that one property has included view fencing, so we don't have any sort of precedent to stray from what the code requires. So regarding that, I staff myself, we can't support a solid wall for that west lot line. And the recommendation for you, which I'll show you on the next slide, is to not approve the exhibits as shown. Instead, this recommendation as stated, you know, our request for you is subject to three stipulations. I'll read them for you. If the record, one, a building permit issued by the city will be required for any construction. Two, solid wall construction is permitted on the north and south lot lines. These are the side yards. And then three, view fencing or the wall, essentially the same thing, you know, not opaque, is required along the west lot line, which is the rear yard, which is adjacent to the pathway. That concludes my presentation and the background for you this evening, and I'm able to answer any questions and the applicant is here as well.
Let me give a little perspective. I walk that path pretty much every day with my dog when it's not hot. But there are at least, at least three and maybe four that have solid walls along there. At least three of the larger lots and as you get to the smaller lots that are not this size zoning, there definitely are solid walls. But I, but I know one remodel is recent and it has a total block wall of one property. And then one that's closest to the, I guess it would be the north end of the park. That one has a solid wall as well. And the one that was just recently built that has a view fence, I think they were required because it backs up to the park and not just the pathway. And I think that was the, the our decision then was to stick with the view fence there because it was the park and not just the pathway. And what else's ideas are on that? I just, I'm pretty sure the one, the solid walls that were put there were put in without permitting, most likely. So that's probably where there's no, if there's no record, but if you walk it, it's there. They're definitely there.
And I think they're not, neither here nor there maybe, but there's one even that I think somebody kind of, they were doing recently, like even.
Yeah, they added on to it and they didn't make a patch, yeah.
And I think it's, it gets higher than the six feet. It seems like it is. So there's maybe some non-compliant things happening. Yeah.
This is one of those things where if you do it without permission, then let's let stand and then if you ask for permission, you're not allowed. So I don't know if that's, it doesn't seem seem fair. And I understand most people, because it is that pathway, if you will, walk in and drive in golf carts along it all day long. I get both sides because the ones that don't have fencing at all, there's one that has no fencing, actually that property and the one next to it has no fencing at all. It makes it very lovely to walk there. It does. Yeah, I agree. Yeah. But on the other hand, other people have skirted the code and adult and built their solid walls at least six feet tall. That's my, that's my input on that. And I'm not sure what, you know, how that affects our our decision tonight, or it doesn't change the code, so it might be something that we're pursuant to variance over.
Is the applicant agreeable to the recommendation staff? Or not?
I guess if you want to, yeah, remember and tell us what your opinion is.
I'm creating a little visual because I'm a videoing person, so it makes it easier to explain. So first, first thing to know about me, I do not like to speak publicly, but I'm doing this for my son, so I'm here on his behalf. My name is Michelle Rojas and I've been here in Litchfield about forty years. My parents moved here from Iowa. And when they made that big decision, they asked for my real best place was to raise a family and they were told Litchfield Park and that's how I ended up here. So years later, I raised both of my kids here and years later, when both of my kids went off to start their careers in school, I was hoping that they would come back to Litchfield Park. That became even a bigger deal when they had grandchildren. I want them here. So my son is the one who purchased this property. He and his wife purchased this property recently and is their dream home. And just like we've done in Litchfield Park, they are improving the property significantly from the inside out, including building this block wall. And one of the reasons they wanted the block wall is, you know, I listed some of them here, but the first for them is privacy and security. It is open to the back path. We've had some very nice but curious people who've ended up in the backyard. And, and, you know, it is a place where you can see into the backyard and especially with a small child, their, their desire would be to have the property closed in the back. In addition, preventing disturbances to neighbors. So I have chatted with all three of the neighbors. I went and talked with the neighbors to north and south and to the west of us behind on Allegre and they, and I shared with them the truth that they do have two dogs. They're friendly golden doodles. But when they see people walking down that path, they are going to bark. And neighbors had expressed some concerns over other view fences, including there are some neighbors that have view fencing and the dog barking and escaping and other things are significant in that area. We also thought that there's consistency, as Susan mentioned, there are consistency with the upgraded walls in the neighborhood. So what I did here is I, I just walked through there like I do normally and took a look. And the blue lines that you can see are all six-foot block walls. The orange ones are a combination of things. Our neighbors have a chicken wire fence on their property. There's another one with chain link and there's another one with a smaller, like some of the older walls that were in the neighborhood about four foot tall. And then pink have, those houses do have view fencing. And then as noted, are the property which I've outlined in the hash marks and the property just to the south of us do not have fencing. So our, we do have approval of those neighbors. We are also agreeing to make the fence three foot inside the property line so as not to disturb the existing plants that are there. There are old, you know, oleanders that kind of line each of those properties and we talked to both neighbors and want to be sure to preserve those. So that's the proposal as well. And so that is what I proposed to the city and went through the whole process and was surprised to learn, but, you know, understand that there are policies in place about the rule related to the block wall. It is being professionally built. We do have a contractor on the property. And as I said, our goal is to beautify this community that our family absolutely loves and hopefully will be here forever. Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Questions for staff or applicant?
I guess the question I would have would be, this is before, before us just to approve the design. We're not, this is not, we're not in an invariant situation.
Yeah, that's what I'm curious is how, if it's not, if it's, if we're in a variant situation, how can we, it does seem like we're in a
Generally.
It's just a block, a standard block wall stuck on the outside or?
We did not plan to stucco it. However, I, when I looked around at other walls, I thought like to be consistent with some like a neutral, like brown color, desert color paint on the wall would match what was in the area. So that's what I was thinking.
Chair and vice chair to your questions. It's in the staff report and this isn't within our code as well. The stipulations do not include every code requirement in that regard. So to your point and within the report, you will note that the exterior wall is required to be stuck out and painted per code. It's not stipulated because there isn't, it's not up for your discretion or your approval tonight. It's just part of construction within the city of Litchfield Park has that requirement.
Well, I guess like, I guess it seems like we're talking about whether or not they can build what they want. And if there's something in the code that says no, it seems to me it's more of a variance request than what we're doing. And I live over on Litchfield behind Scout Park, so I've been up and down there. I hadn't gone through recently, it's too hot, with the, you know, wondering about all these things. But I can tell you, not all of these, the ones that don't have, that don't have the view fences. Some of them are ones where me personally, I would just assume not be able to see into those backyards because what it looks like to me, my family, before I ended up out in Arizona, were ranchers and farmers in Nebraska and you had all these, you know, little, little towns. And when I saw these houses, it looked to me like at one point, maybe you had a scenario like Seventh Avenue downtown where you have the backyard and then you have the rear backyard where the horse is.
That's what they said, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it looks like. So it looks like we're looking at sort of a, what would otherwise be like a barn and so anyway, to me, I've always kind of wondered about that. At some point, the towns kind of outgrow somewhere where we are. But I'm concerned about trying to approve anything that would involve those walls under this auspices. If the code says we can't, that would then mean it would need to go to a variant. And a lot of the arguments that are being made would be ones that we may or may not agree. But there, you said, there's a lot of blue lines there up and down that, up and down that alley. So anyway, that would be my thoughts. I think, I'm not sure we have the authority. We can approve design, but if there's an issue about, part of that design is this, you know, this wall. And I would think that bill, property owners would want to know whether this is going to be approved or not before they start. I mean, I don't want to design your project, but if it were me, I'd want to know before I spent money what this, what was going to happen on this wall because it might change the thinking of what you're, what they're trying to do. Anyway, that's my only, my only thought. It just seems more like we should have a variant.
Is that a separate meeting?
It's a separate application process. It's ours, it's the same board, but it's a separate, it's because it's a legal thing. It has to be publicly noticed and there's different requirements involved. As far as, I think this is what happened, the corner house, the big, the really large house across from the park. And it was again, I think it was in order not to go through the variance, he disagreed to do a view fence. I think he's got it like two or three feet and then wrought iron. And then, and then our recommendation was to plant a hedge in front of it if you wanted. And I think it's like partially successful in the current of his hedge is growing that well. I think that's how, I think he was doing that in terms of timing. Like he just agreed to put the view fence in and then put a hedge. And that might for as far as time and efficiency, that might be your best bet also to do your sidewalls if they're permitted. And then do partial view fence and then on your side of that view fence, plant a hedge. And that's, that would be, you know, be one thing that would be acceptable under the code without the variance process.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there are a couple of things to consider. One is that there are these fifty-foot trees on the inside of that fence. And that's one consideration we thought about because we did thought of, think about that. Another is the dogs and they're still going to be able to see out and that could be a bit of a nuisance for the neighbors. And then just people being able to see and still even with the, and then water and everything else. So, so the preference would still be that. So it sounds like what I need to do is go to a variance, go through the variance process and then apply for that and go through that.
And it's one thing also. And then the other thing is, it seems like there's so many things that are non-compliant. It seems like the city needs to revisit that whole thing rather than trying to give variances to every single property. It seems like.
If the original intent was it was like the back farm, you know, that may be our need to evolve. So it might be a good time for the city to bring it to the city council and maybe try to address it that way, I would say. Because my concern is that if you bring it to the variance, like there are legal requirements that have to be met by the package in order for us to permit it and we, or to allow it. And we, I mean, it, one of the basis that, you know, I always shy away from is, well, the neighbors have it, you know what I mean? Even if it's a non-compliant, like, well, we can't set a new boundary based on non-compliance of other people. So that's a struggle for me. So I would be concerned a little bit about you coming to the variance and then, you know, still being denied. But it's clear that like we hear your side and are sympathetic to it. And I think, I think I think it would be a really good discussion to have with the council. If that's the best path.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure how to advise.
We have a little bit of time. So I applied for this some time ago and it wasn't discovered until later that we needed to come to this committee. So it's been a couple of months and and so, but we have time. So I have until, before the baby gets here, probably, and the dogs get here, I have until maybe the first week of October. So it does give me a little bit of time if I needed to go through the variance process and, and I hear your point. I thought the same thing coming here. Like a good argument is like, is I have, I had teenage kids, like, well, I don't care what the other kids are doing, like we, we have rules. But, but I do, I do think there are other arguments such as the security and the privacy and the fact that behind there is a cul-de-sac where cars come through and the lights shine into the back of the property. There are other reasons besides other people have done it. I don't know if they would meet the requirements of a variance, but, but I do know that the neighbors are like hugely supportive of it and agree with, with the plan. So that might, that might work in our favor. I don't know, but.
Just in response to what you said, with the lights coming into your yard, that, that seems to me like one of the criteria we have to meet on the variance is that you, there's some special condition that applies to your lot that you didn't create. And that seems like that, you know, my, so I don't know. Maybe consult with the city and think about it. But there's a couple of different avenues, but I agree generally that like we can't necessarily approve something that is not code compliant either.
Okay. So the better place for me to be is in a variance committee meeting and there's a process that I would go through to apply for that.
Yeah, there's an application process and I'm not sure how, what the timeframe is. Our next meeting is the first Thursday of next month and I don't know if you like got the application, if the notification. Get it on for next. The first Thursday of September would be the next, that would be the soonest that it could be heard.
Okay. And, and then are we permitted to go so that, because we have a builder who's been waiting on this job for us. Is it possible for us to then build the two sidewalls because those are up to the code, right?
Those were already approved, right, or those could be.
I don't know.
Chair members of the board, just to clarify a couple of things going back and forth here to Ms. Rojas as well. So it's, the code requires any new wall construction comes before the DRB. So even the sidewalls are for you this evening for your consideration. I would not want to put the applicant in a situation where we essentially pause this to go back through the variance. Fortunately, they're on the same night, so we can, we can do that if you prefer in September to go sort of adjustment and straight into designer view. It is at your discretion if you want to possibly amend the stipulations as stated. And this is my idea, but please deliberate and determine how you'd like to move forward. Number three could be restated to say view fence or walls required on the west lot line unless variance approval is given, something of that nature. Number two could be changed. Solid wall construction is permitted on the north, west and, I don't know why it says sound, excuse me, it should say south. A south lot lines. It's incorrectly written in the staff report as well. So we'll, we'll look for amended motion on that just to make sure it's on the record correctly. Going back to it, number two could say solid wall construction is permitted on the north, west and south lot lines subject to the approval of a variance. If you'd like to at least address this concern, get the two other walls going now for construction. And then at the September meeting, consider the variance request for the view fence versus solid wall on the west side.
Also, I had a question on why, I mean, if you're accommodating by moving it in three feet, but you're essentially giving your neighbor, each neighbor three feet of property. It's that, that would not be part of my recommendation, but I would place the wall between the properties that pleases both parties rather. Most typically, it's right on the property line. But if there's some landscaping feature that you both want to preserve, then yeah, obviously then you can place the wall where you want it.
Yeah, I consulted with some, someone about those oleanders and they said if we put them any closer than that, it will probably destroy the wall. So I did talk to both neighbors about how they felt about the oleanders and both liked the oleanders, were okay with the oleanders. And so we just agreed that we would
Build it in.
Yeah, build it inside. I mean, it's still our property. I actually think they intend to keep their, maybe their fence that runs like through the oleanders, which I think would be good. So, so I do, I do realize that, but it was a solution that can both, all neighbors agreed to and thought would be the best solution. I may put it a touch closer, the guidance from the, the landscaper says like, it'll be okay to be two feet away. But, but I just don't want to risk ten years from now the wall coming down because of those oleanders. So.
Does anybody want to attempt a motion?
Actually, before we move on, I just have one question also about the eight-foot gate. Is that height or is that? It's, it's still like the six foot or whatever. So yes.
Can I attempt a motion? Anybody?
I mean, I guess I would make a motion that we permit as proposed, a solid wall for north, south and west side, assuming there is a variance that could be approved. And if, if the variance is not approved, then the V fence, there has to be a V fence on the west bottom line as per the city's original stipulation.
Give your motion a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are you, are you good on the motion? Could be restated? We have a motion and a second, are you, are you good on the motion, maybe restated? Good, okay, so I have a motion to approve the the solid wall as as applied for on the north and south and west pending a variance. And otherwise, a view fence would be required. All in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Was that an aye? Yeah, okay.
Can I clarify, does that allow us to s- start on the north and south sides?
Okay, yes, okay, okay, and then we'll, and then just check with city staff about applying for the variance and then. It's something we should take up with um planning and zoning. And council, let's see if we can get something. Better along that way, so. I I wish it was like just more consistent, it would, it would still be lovely to walk there, but we got, you know. One wall that looks not so good, next to, they're, they're all kind of different. Thank you very much.
Yes. Can you just bring that up with Matthew in your next uh weekly meeting with him?
Yes, so council member James, uh, yes.
I don't know when it'll make it to council, but it'll, I mean, I I agree with you, it's, it's, there's, there's a whole lot of inconsistency and. You know, just looking at the optics of this. While it's within the code.
Yeah.
Having her put a view fence in is counter, it's, it's to the opposite of what's there now, so yeah, trying to. Get something consistent.
Maybe the code needs to catch up to what's happening.
Yeah, my wish list rose.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, I didn't see Wigwam new maintenance. Overview and then um Rick and you will speak.
So chair members of the board, good evening, what's more? Second question for you is item five seats is Wigwam's new maintenance building. Uh, Rick from Wigwam is here for you this evening, the request is to construct two new buildings, one is three thousand, the other is twenty-two forty-five. Square feet respectively, uh, within the golf course maintenance yard, just off Bird Lane. This property is zone open space OS. Request is to add the two buildings uh that were previously uh located there, uh, was much one. Thank you, uh, I'll use Rick to supplement my presentation at times, uh, it was one larger building, it did receive a. Some storm damage, uh, areas for you here this evening as well, uh, that damage uh affected a number of homes directly off Bird Lane surrounding this property. So that uh. The building did come down and uh the request for you is basically replace that situation at the Wigwam. Here is that maintenance yard, Bird is just off screen to the north, we have a residence just adjacent. Uh, just uh the back up to this maintenance yard, as it were. I'll do the same thing, I'll show you the plans. The two buildings are shaded and let's call it the top right corner, there are two of them, these are now meeting the setbacks required by code. That's uh, a lot of the conversation ahead of this meeting was in regards to what made the most sense as far as path forward. Uh, what ended up being was uh the request for you this evening just to go through DR and not through a variance. Procedure to reduce the setbacks to get them essentially where they used to be historically. So they are meeting the setback intents, certainly uh. The. The aesthetic of them is in line with what you'd expect. For a maintenance building that isn't visible on any of the four sides. Within a contained yard that is surrounded by shrubbery as well, so that is a uh. It's called a standard looking building of what you'd expect for uh this kind of equipment. It's not visible from any sort of public right of way by any means that is contained uh within the shrubbed area per se. And just as a uh point of clarification, I met with Rick. And this is an image looking west. From the course into what is the old maintenance yard and what the current status is of those uh shrubs that. Screen the immense amount of equipment on the other side of that uh green wall, let's call it. Now, you'll notice in the next slide, a large number of stipulations and we'll go through those in just a minute, but. What it comes down to is when it is new commercial construction, there are modern code standards that must be addressed. Along with the zoning code, but certainly the IDC, the International Building Code and fire code as well as that. Now, as mentioned, because of its locations, some of the. Standard things that you would see stacked stone, S tile roofs, stucco, those aren't. Part of this uh proposal for you this evening, again, because of the use and location in that regard, normally DRB would have a much more. Uh, active role in these stacks of. Poses such as this, now again, as mentioned, this is an uh ongoing conversations been happening with the city with Wigwam and with the adjacent owners and this is. Essentially continue to push this project forward and uh have some resolution. Now, our request for you this evening, I apologize for the smaller text, as it all did. I wanted to fit it all on one sheet so you knew the totality of what was being posed for you this evening, there are seven stipulations. So uh, I'll go through them just for you and for the record, number one, the proposed building and roofing materials shall match existing buildings. Two, property owner must plant and maintain reasonable screening with a natural buffer such as a hedge or oleanders in the eastern. Boundary of the Wigwam maintenance property to provide screening from the two adjacent homes. Number two, we feel is already met, but we put this to your discretion as well, this is not only for now, but. You know, ongoing into the future and certainly we understand seasonal changes, you know, will affect. Heights, the the density of that screening, but we do feel as staff that what is there today is already meeting the intent of number two. Number three, all roofing materials on existing and proposed buildings in the parcel shall be securely mounted, subject to review by the city building official. That is in regard to what had happened in the past and certainly as new construction occurs, our building official is going to go out not only to this new building, but understand. Uh, how this new building. Affectual of fire ratings, fire separation as well as. Ensuring a safe operation, like frankly, of how all this uh has existed and will continue, it's just the future. Numbers four, five and six really are on the onus of the applicant for you this evening to meet. Now, that can be accomplished in a number of ways and the different construction materials, we are not prescribing. The the manufacturer, the materials being used, it's on uh Rick and the Wigwam to determine whatever particular. Source they go with in order to accomplish these goals, needs to meet these requirements. One way or another, I hope that makes sense. Number uh seven there for you, final design plan shall include a grading and drainage plan to confirm finished floor elevation and drainage. This is a standard stipulation, hopefully you've seen in the past, a new sort of construction will want to make sure water does not go into that building. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have and Rick is here for you this evening as well, should you have any questions upon the applicant?
Great, thank you. I'm gonna add to. His information, thanks.
What's that, I'm sorry?
If you want to add anything to his information.
Oh, um, yes, thank you, Rick Seaside, Dr. Goff over at the Wigwam, I wanna thank Randy first, uh, he was. Very helpful in understanding a lot of this and getting through, I've never been to this process before, so please bear me, bear with me, um. Stipulation one makes perfectly sense, stipulation two, while there is currently a thing, we have no interest in taking that down. But that is bordering our property, so that east looking facing, that is our own property, that's a golf course, um. To maintain reasonable screening, if that's a permanent stipulation on this building. Um, I don't know how that's easily defined, I don't know how we. Define that, I don't want to be tied particularly to the homeowner that lives there because they're going to call code enforcement every time they think it's not up to their code, their standards. Um, so the city will be tied to this person as well. So that's, I would, I would like to see that removed, given that uh there's already a buffer there. And we're trying to appease one neighbor there by adding stipulations, we moved the setback and avoided the variance um to avoid this type of situation. We wanted to just stick with code, build within code and then move on, so we um avoided the uh variance. Which we really wanted, the homeowner actually wanted it on both sides, wanted us to put the building back where it was. Uh, but that process, you know, can add. Time, dollars, all those types of things, so. Um, number three, roofing materials on existing and proposed buildings, proposed buildings obviously, um, but to have all of our buildings out there. Um, subject to inspection, I don't know why that's necessary when we're looking at the new building, we're solving the problem that was there, it was an older building, roof blew off. We took the building down, we're putting up new ones.
But what is the new construction proposed, is it just a metal building?
Yeah, just PBR, metal building, metal studs, metal roof, all PBR. Um, there's a few garage doors that open up, so we get equipment and seed in in and out, that's the only thing that's stored in there, just a storage building. There are, there, the only wood in the building are the trusses, I believe. Supporting the roof.
And then do you know like the height, the height and the roof pitch of what's?
I know, I was just trying to read that, I think it says eleven foot four inches overall height and a twelve foot ceiling height. On the elevations that are in the package.
Uh, chair, members of the board, twelve foot ceiling height, yes, and seventeen point seventeen feet four inches overall height. To the peak, yes.
Um, but yeah, my my only concern there is, you know, the review of all the existing buildings on site, I didn't know if that was normal. We go up building anywhere on property, we'd have to have everything on property expected or what, I don't know how that's signed to it.
I think uh are there just asking to make sure that the roof is not gonna block the other two buildings, maybe, uh, that's all that they're caring about, there's. Hurricane clips or whatever that's needed to be installed, that's pretty good.
My personal concern is with the other building that was there, I was planning on replacing the roof and. I brought the building inspector out and then I ended up having to take the building down, so I don't want to be in that situation again. So I'm trying to avoid that, that's why my request is, and. Um, items four through six, uh, those are all standard building codes, right? There's nothing, there's nothing, there's nothing there that's. Added on just for this project, those are all standard city building codes, correct?
Yeah. And the.
There's nothing discussed there.
Is are all commercial required sprinklers?
True, that's true.
Okay, that's right, so anything like residential, you you'd have to exceed a certain square footage. But on all commercial properties are now required.
Yeah, I'm not asking for any code variances or anything, um. Although the sprinkler system, depending on how we end up with that, because we don't currently have one at that lot, so it's gotta come in from Bird Lane. So that may make the project cost effective, so this may all be moot, um, or cost ineffective. Uh, and we may go to shade structure or just shade structures eventually. Um, that being said, I know the homeowners want. Buildings there because they are a natural sound buffer between all the work that goes on in the yard and visual barrier. Between the property, which is the other issue with the um. The reasonable screening and plants between that building, the building itself is the screen, it's screening the yard from what goes on on there. The push is just active. Uh, the last one on the list there, design plans, drainage range, I can spend more money on engineering, but we're not changing the grading though, the grading was as is where the buildings already were. We're not doing anything to that, it's everything's being poured at grade. Um, so there hasn't been any drainage issues in the past, but if it's something you. You don't want to see plans on, we can get plans put together for you, but. I'm just asking. Save a little money there. That's it, so my real concerns are. Items two, part of item three, and then a request on item seven.
Okay.
So we can here address those.
I have some questions, I guess. Um, so I'm just curious about the uh, the plant buffer that is there now, face that's like uh between the buildings and the resident residential places. So are those gonna be uh impacted by the construction at all then, or that what's existing should?
Those won't be impacted, no.
Okay, and.
That right behind those um is a chain link fence, uh, what is it, maybe six feet, seven feet, you were taking. Um, and then the building that takes place, the new building will be up against that fence just on the other side.
But I just think it's important to note that it, uh, the building is a definitely a like a noise buffer, but then the plants are kind of a nice visual buffer.
It is.
Yeah, and and I just wanted to ask also, um. The, do you, what was the height, the retired of the building that was there before? It was about the same, like, is it gonna be similar or?
The one in that location was a little shallow, I'm gonna say it's closer to thirteen feet. Um, it just had a slanted roof on it, so it was interior, it was the same height, but you know, this one has a peaked roof. Uh, we can also tweak that roof if the height of the building is a concern.
Um, I'm honestly, I'm, I apologize, but I'm not that familiar with the open space zoning, so is there any, are there any building requirements as far as height or any, what would that be?
Uh, Chair, board member Dudley. I was, and this goes back to council member James's request on uh possible future code amendments. There is. Clear language for golf course maintenance buildings and for landscape requirements. Or dissimilar uses in the resort zoning district, not the open space zoning district. This is a situation, as Rick had mentioned, that uh on either side of that eastern. Area, I'm not gonna say lot line because it's, you know, a part of the course. Is both theirs and both zone open space, the yard is within the open space district boundaries, so those sorts of uh. Intricacies are not within the open space zoning district.
We don't have any guidance there, basically.
Nothing additional to clarify or uh similar to the last uh presentation, nothing additional within code that was to be followed.
Can I uh, I show is the the hedge or the the buffer, is that on your property or is, was that on? Homeowner property or a combination?
The east side that's speaking of, that's, that borders our property.
What about?
The north side, there are, there's oleanders there, but that is on the property of the um north ones, yes, there's two homes.
Okay, so that's their oleander shrub, that, okay, so. That I don't know, we can't let me, we can't, I guess, just don't make it. Where the damages there, shrub, but I don't think that we're required to maintain anything that's not on your property. And then the other one is is just screening it from. The golf course, right, or?
What's that?
The other, you're talking about.
The the west side or?
The west east side, which side is it?
It was from the east, Chair.
Yeah, so that, I mean, it's, it's in your own best interest to s- screen it from the golf course. Aesthetically, so that's, that's.
And Chair, maybe just to clarify, I should have stated, we're looking at the cart path and then there is a, one of the homes, as mentioned, is there on the right, you can see the white. Wall and uh view fence.
That's, that's looking west, right?
That's true, yes.
I know, that's looking.
Looking west.
Looking west, right?
Yes.
It on the east, looking west, towards the.
We're looking towards the maintenance yard. Bird lane is on your right.
Number eight, fair one.
Okay, but that's.
You can see the roof of the maintenance shop, this is the house, the first one that comes on and then you got houses all the way down. It's there and it's hidden. The homeowner's request there is that it's maintained differently. Based on what they, what I'm reading here is that they requested that that all gets pulled out and they put all new owners in.
That their request?
That, that's, that's where this is coming from.
The Chair, I'm not. I can't speak for the conversations, there was a lot of conversations uh earlier this year, Rick would know better than I in that situation. I I don't read the stipulation as that, I know uh Commissioner Derry also has his hand up. You know, the stipulation, I'll go back to that slide, well, just we're looking at the same thing and I apologize again for the small texts. In the property owner must plant and maintain reasonable screen with a natural buffer such as a hedge or oleanders, that's not to state that it must be. Uh, simply examples of what could meet the intent.
Okay, uh. Board member, Derek.
Yes. Um, I have two questions, first. In item uh or line number three, all roofing materials on existing. Where did that come from? Because this is a recommendation based on two new buildings, why would we try and include all the roof? Roofing on the mater- and materials for all the other buildings on there, uh, the, those buildings have been there for a long time. I know that the the two that they're replacing were a, you know, a problem with the storm. And then the um other question is, uh, when you said this is a uh, an all steel building, steel studs. And then the other question is, when you said this is a, an all steel building, steel studs, metal roof, standing seam, I'm guessing, and siding is like a lap siding or a four by eight panels?
Yeah, that's correct about the building and the construction of it. As far as the existing buildings and why that's in there, the, can you pull the map?
I'm sorry?
The map, the overview of the things? Because you've got a good picture on there, I can explain it a little bit better. On the building to the north, just below the pool there, you see a blue tarp. There were three panels on that building that blew off onto the neighbor's property. We've replaced those panels, we've secured all the other panels on that whole building. So we've replaced it, but that's where it comes from, but that's where the request from the city has come from.
Okay, I, I don't agree with that. I agree that, you know, being a contractor, that when you have maintenance issues because of a storm causing it's mother nature, so you fix them. And then you check your other buildings accordingly because you're good people and don't want it to blow off again because it costs you money. So I don't see a need for that in item three, and I would be happy to make a recommendation that we eliminate that because they're, they're taking care of the property.
And Chair, Board Member Derek, just to elaborate, just of why that came to be. You know, I certainly appreciate Rick's perspective. I did talk to the building official today because a lot of these things were written, I think, in March of this year, and we are here about, you know, five months later. Essentially, what it comes down to, and it's, it's a broad term, so excuse the vagary, but it's the health, safety, and welfare. That's what everything comes down to in city government. So our building official wanted to ensure that if he is going out and being put within this yard, within this campus, the idea that new construction could take place and anything else would essentially have blinders on to whatever else is occurring is a bit of a liability concern on the city side as far as we are going to this site, we are inspecting on new construction. And while however everything else is, it's just is, and knowing that we've had a problem in the past, that's where, from the city side, just to answer Board Member Derek's question, that's where this came in as far as we don't, we don't have carte blanche to show up and inspect. But since we are coming on and we are doing new construction, this would be the time to have that evaluation done.
So it sounds like maybe the concern is that there has been deferred maintenance that is an issue, and the city does not have a mechanism for inspecting.
So Board Member Dudley, I don't know, I can't speak for upkeep. I don't want to assume anything other than with new construction, we saw the building official, I should say, specifically saw this as a chance to evaluate the overall condition of everything since we were doing new construction within the yard.
It's commercial property, I mean, we get inspected once a year.
We get inspected by the fire department as well.
Yes, is there, not on this topic? Is there anyone who would like to speak?
That was the original conversation that goes back in the last year. Yes, well, we've done, we've done some evaluation and we've loosened it and have determined that that, those oleanders are on their property. They were, you can apply services, you were involved back then. But the, they were looking into where their previous stipulations placed on those buildings, because they're put on property line. But we also don't know whether the house was there or the building was there first. So there is some confusion on that north property line. But we did determine the oleanders are on their own property, not on our property, and there's nothing in the city books that stipulates that we must maintain those on their properties. So the homeowners, the homeowners are now aware of that, and they're maintaining those both on the north, north property.
And so that, that is why you, it's the issues with the west screening then?
Although, the west screening, the west screening, I just, I just don't understand why it's attached to these two buildings. We do have something there. I just don't want to be attached to the homeowner there and code enforcement every time they think it's not up to their standards. I mean, the building itself is the, is the visual and noise buffer. The oleanders help, but that is the buffer.
Well, personally, I feel like if the building is going to be the visuals offer, then, then we need to look at it from that standpoint. Because I think, I think plants are, I think it's kind of an important buffer visually and, and noise wise, between what's kind of an industrial almost use and, and what's just right there next to like residential stuff. To me, to me, the plants are kind of important, honestly, but.
But as you mentioned, it's, it's not required in open space, the buffer?
Chair, Board Member Dudley, to Rick. So as far as a zoning code requirement, because you have open space district that encompasses both, not from a zoning code perspective. But certainly, and it's in the report as well, some of the the reductions of what a building normally would look like in Litchfield Park were reduced onto your burden because of the landscaping that surrounds it. So if we're in a situation where there was no landscaping and now we're looking at a metal building, we don't have a mechanism to support a metal building that is essentially unbecoming of the city of Litchfield Park and our design standards. Your design standards, as part of the DRB's discretion, greatly reduce, again, because you're contained and not seen.
That, that's exactly, yeah, if you want to build a, a industrial building, which is what it basically is, next to a residential or next to a resort, then, you know, we would we'd require it to look a lot better if you didn't have it totally screened with, with landscaping and not, not saying the building is the screening. So it's not the work in the yard, all of that is important to screen also, but the building itself is not as good as the the residential on either, any side of it.
It's really just not aligned with the Wigwam itself up there, this part of the standards of, of the property, so. Or anyhow, it's either bring it up to that standard or screen it with landscaping.
I mean, they did buy a house next to a manager.
I mean, this, I think this came to council in February, and it's August. So it's, I know a lot of work has gone into this, John and yourself, into this, and I, I mean, I, I continue to look, Rick Hollen's been at the Wigwam for thirty years, forty years? Of course, okay, so, and, I mean, if you look at the history, the, the, for the longest time, it was our largest tax revenue entity in the community. If you look at the projects that they've done over the course of just the last decade with golf course upkeep, halfway house on the rent, they, they don't shortchange projects. They're not, you know, not to mention, yes, it's a maintenance area, but they have hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment used to maintain three golf courses. I, I tend to side on the fact with, with Rick and the Wigwam being good stewards of this community. Yeah, I, I mean, we're, we're talking about the three houses there, Will Rousseau's house, I assume your house, sir. And I don't know who the third neighbor is, but I, yeah, I, I just think that we're, we're kicking the can down with this. I think the proposal that's, that's, seems like there's been a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of agreements on both sides to get to this state. I, I, I mean, it's, it's, I don't think they're going to put an ice on it. They're going to build a building that's going to last for the next forty years so that it's not, you know what I mean? And, and the hedge thing, it, it already appears to me that there's adequate hedging around all, all sides of it, that coming in and saying, hey, go plant twenty oleanders on your side of the property now because you, so I just doesn't, it I, I'm, so I guess where I'm at on this is I agree with Board Member Derek. I, I don't think that two and three really, really make a lot of sense, and I'm, at, at this point in time, I'm, there'll continue deliberation, but I'm ready to, to move this forward and get this project going, so.
Any other discussion, question for staff or applicant?
I guess I would just say that I wasn't in at all those different meetings, but I can remember along the way residents coming. And I can say over the years, there have been times where the Wigwam was not such a good neighbor, depending on who the owners were, but, and the residents are longstanding there. And I'm not comfortable with just saying we should trust the Wigwam that everything will be fine. The point of doing things is to, not to harass the Wigwam, but to make sure they, in fact, because the Wigwam could change ownership in a year. You could have entirely new owners. Might say, yeah, this is not our problem. It's not anywhere in here. We're not going to do it. So the whole goal is to have something that everybody agreed on, including the residents. The residents have been through a lot with some of these storms and roofs coming off and the other things which damaged their property. They had to spend money, as I recall, fixing their property. So I'm, I have no problem with the recommendation as it is. And I would make a motion that says that we approve, subject to the exhibits and, and stipulations one through seven. And then move it along and I don't want to be in a scenario where we have to say, if something goes wrong later, say, well, you know, the Wigwam said everything would be fine. You know, and you get new owners or new management or whatever, and it can change overnight, so. I, I'm perfectly happy with the one through seven and approving and then moving it on.
Yeah, I, I agree and I will second it, but I also, I just want, I just want to say, like, for the record, this building is not in accordance with the design standards of the city. So like for me, the screening is, is not negotiable, and I've been for exactly the reasons that you're saying. So personally, I, I would vote against removing that one. But anyway, so I second your motion.
If a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Move to amend the motion, striking items two and three.
Guys, for lack of a second.
I'll sec, I'll second it.
We have a motion to amend, the motion, striking two and three. So I take a vote on that?
You would take a, a vote on that to see whether the amendment?
Okay, I'll vote on the amendment. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So the nays have it.
So now we go back to the previous.
Now, back to the previous motion. I'll call the vote, then. All in favor? Is there any? Member here, or member Derek?
Yes, I, I had seconded the motion after Dave made the motion, so I'm not sure why you didn't hear me, but I seconded that motion, so I don't see why I'd move beyond that.
You, you, you seconded an amendment?
No, I seconded his, his original recommendation, what he put up as this is the, you know, this is what we want, so.
Oh, one through, oh, I thought you were, I thought you were seconding the amendment, sorry. So we're going to go ahead and vote on the original?
Which is to?
Motion, just to follow the recommendations. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay.
Councilmember James, which way?
Did you abstain? Aye.
I'm sorry, which, in support, I think.
Board member, and then did you get the vote from? Okay, thank you. So that, that is approved with the stipulations as stated. Okay. I'm just, stop, stop reporting.
Sorry, is it approved? How do we define maintain reasonable screening? And what is that? Is there a different board that does that, or?
Chair, that's okay, I can answer that.
To quantify it or something.
Correct, and when you and I discuss, it is squishy. It is slightly vague on purpose to assume that you and I and through our code enforcement. Yes.
Things is basically kind of what has been there before, and then. Okay, moving on, staff report on current events.
Chair, Members Board, Councilmember James, hello. It's nice to meet you all. It is week six. I've been a West Valley native. It works through Peoria, Glendale, and the city of Buckeye, all with its own challenges and opportunities. Certainly, I appreciate everything that John Frock provided to this board and all commissions and council over the past two and a half years. His departure to Minnesota was an opportunity for me. I could not pass up by any means, so. Excited to be here. I am thrilled at the amount of designer reviews that have come through, quite frankly, from our residents and from our businesses that want to continue to invest in their properties, as well as a little project called Litchfield Square. It's taken a lot of time, as well as moving on to the Hilltop project as well. We will have a meeting in August, so, I'm sorry, it's already August, in September. So I look forward to seeing you guys in about four weeks' time. We are, we'll have items for that one as well. And we'll continue to work through the planning and zoning commission and through the rest of code to determine what opportunities and texts we can look to improve our interpretability and execution of those items. Thank you.
Thanks, nice to meet you as well. Any other current events? No, okay, any board members? Board member Derek? No, okay, any board members have reports on current events? No, a motion to adjourn?
Some would.
Question and second, all in favor, say aye.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks.